Yeah. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Just gotta bear with me for a second or some reason. Do you have a safety agenda?
Yes.
Any additional changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Are you doing a presentation? Mr. Tid is doing a secondary school update presentation.
I am, yes.
So the floor is yours, Mr. Tid unless he wants to take that off.
Nope, not his.
So there, perfect. First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Kane and the rest of the board for letting me present. I'm just some updates and highlights from the secondary building. Seem fitting to the fact that we had a musical on Sunday. We had winter sports happening, both thrilling way on Saturday. And we also have third mark period coming through 12th street early. So I'm just gonna kind of go through some slides if you have questions at the very end, feel free to ask. So first off with academics. With the new schedule, we're seeing a high number of students that are still being recognized for high honors, honors, and our honorable mention in grade seven through 12th. For example, in just the senior class alone, we have over seventy percent of the students that fell under either high honors, honors, or honorable mention. We have twenty-nine students that are eligible for national junior honor signing and twenty-one students are eligible for national honor side this year. We currently have twenty-five in national junior honor society and forty-one in national honor side. So with their look at them standing and we'll also look at the four pillars of national honor side. Talk about character, service, leadership. Our school council right now are meeting with students and families to discuss class scheduling for next year. We're seeing increased opportunities for students with school classes, distance learning, internships, and CTE. And we're having ongoing professional development with teaching staff. Just recently, we had a PD, a staff component day which we focused on student engagement, teaching strategies, teaching modalities, scheduling, and pace, which was good to kind of go through. Moving on, shifting into art. Bunch of bad bad stuff.
Oh, yeah, it's not going for some reason. It's on my screen, but not on that.
If not, we can go. Uh, just kind of skip to it there.
Okay, there we go.
All right. In art, we had the most high school student exhibition art show that is going to be at the Westville Library for the month of March. We had C.D. Poole and Brady Quay were the ones for best of show in their categories. The Burn Library, Amanda Mormon as well, who went as adult, very talented with photography as well, in nature. We have an updated art show that will be at the Burn Library for the month of April. Student artwork is being submitted to the Saratoga Racing Museum. And in May, Mrs. Zemby is hosting community bowls for books through the Burn Library, which should be offered every Friday. Proceeds from that go back to the Burn Library, which can offer help with book programming here at school as well. So nice job there. And music, we just had the BKW Theater troupe that closed out a three-day run on the way out west in Address. Fantastic show there, your incredible job. The BKW Color Guard participated in its first ever pep rally. We also had forty-five fourth through twelfth graders who performed the festival of trees over the winter. And you continue on there. She's driving. It's all right.
I just got up. Says we lost her.
Driving, yeah, just keep reading. Continue on. All right. We had three students, three student musicians, Bass and Beck, okay. Probably Ann wants you to hurry up.
She's like, un.
All right, perfect. So yeah, three student musicians, Bass and Beck, Ben West, and Danae Rose, who were selected to participate in the NISM zone eight area all state. This was the first time in over two decades since we've had students who were recognized for that. Danae Rose was recognized by WMHT as her student of the month for for March. We had nine junior high and four senior high band students who participated in the Cary County Music Educators Association Winter All County Ensembles. We forward there to some upcoming events. We have a solo competition coming April fifth, the Spring All County is April twenty-sixth. The Burn Memorial Day Parade is May twenty-sixth, the NISM Solo is May sixteenth, and the secondary spring concert is June sixth. Shifting into FFA, so kind of we'll focus on leadership development. We had twenty-one students at the District Two Leadership Development Events in Cary. They've participated in competitions such as agricultural issues, the junior and senior prayer speaking, and junior and senior people agriculture. The following students competed at the Eastern Region Substates Competition in Cary. The conduct of chapter meeting, Connor Brundage, Olivia Young, Paulus Lernland, Lolly Slernland, Carly Care, Gavin Quinn, and Nick Malino. The junior people agriculture was Lacy Mackey and Wes Gumber, and senior people agriculture was Carly Care and Apollo Slernland. Shifting to more like a career development events. This Friday, we have four students competing as agricultural technology mechanical systems team at SUNY Cobleskill. Nick Miller, Bates, Colby Partner, and Charles Melo representing BKW. FFA anticipates bringing twenty students to one hundredth New York State FFA Convention in May. During the convention, our students will be competing in CDEs including physical, tool ID, ag sales, marketing, maple, and food science. Additionally, these FFA members will attend leadership workshops put on by state and national officers, participate in service learning projects, and network with colleges and other industry professionals. This year, we are excited to share that we will be represented onstage as several sessions for students receiving check awards, an empire degree, the New York State FFA highest degree, the New York FFA Chapter Challenge, and our very own Mrs. Kane will be receiving her honorary empire degree. Congratulations there. Some upcoming events for FFA. FFA Week is April seventh through eleventh. During the week, members of FFA will be reading to the second and third grade students, which has become a traditional event and which they also incorporate a theme into the reading. On that Friday, we'll be bringing eighteen students to Camp Osmond for the Environmental Leadership Program. They will participate in leadership development activities and outdoor education. June sixth will be annual Ag Day event on the school campus. This is always a great way, or a great day to see our ex students share their enthusiasm for the industry and their projects while educating younger BKW bulldogs. This summer, we're hoping to bring twenty-five students up to Camp Osmond for the summer camp program. This program has been a continual highlight of our FFA program over the last four years we have attended. And FFA has managed to do all that this year, obviously, some budget constraints. Missed out on some couple competitions, events they wanted to maybe go to this year, but again, kind of worked around the challenges with just the bucket. Great job there. Esports.
It's gonna be the old fashioned.
That's right. I'll just start. So parts of the program will be attending Rensfield High School this weekend for the Super Smash Brothers and Rocket League. Turnover to schools from across the state. The program is invited to the New York State High School Showcase on April twenty-seventh and plans on attending. Mr. Durgus is attending events at both SUNST and Bryant and Stratt College. As SUNNY is connected, he attended the ribbon cutting for the new facility. He pursued the private invitation to visit their state-of-the-art air traffic control and flying simulators before it's officially unveiled to their students in the fall. And that's, he plans on bringing a group of students here in the future. Continuing on with esports. Esports is leading the state and nation in the creation of first virtual racing league with collaboration with iRacing. We're running a proof of concept season starting April seventh with seven schools across the state. In the fall, there will be four different series across varying types of racing styles and engineering requirements for their success. The difference with this compared to traditional esports that is relying heavily on CTE students' skills and recording programs for the use of engineering in both development of their virtual cars, but also their rigs in which they participate on. The Pistons next year will also get a chance to visit Watkins Glen's racetrack for a national race and walk the pits, talk to the drivers, and take laps in the pace car.
Do you need chaperone?
Start early list. We've qualified four athletes so far for the Empire States Classic Esports Championships at the University of Mount St. Vincent in Brockston Spring. We anticipate attending, hope to qualify for a few more before then. It's a great job, esports. Moving on, Conservation Club and Track are on the corner here. So we currently have twenty-two students signed up for Track with registration closing tonight. This includes five girls, which allows us to enter the female team division as well for the first time in our school history. Through the greatest donation of their time, facilities, and resources will be used in the Helderburg Rod and Gun Club in Knox, as well as the Basic Valley Fishing Game Club in Westphal for weekly competitions. We're able to loan out quite a bit of ice fishing equipment we have for students this winter through the nice ice. We had local lakes. The Conservation Club is also having discussions about a potential fishing tournament this spring. The plans are set, but still working on logistics and lake access. So nice job there, Mr. D. And rounding over all the athletics, like I said, we just wrapped things up here on Saturday and thrown away. But every winter, varsity sports program received the New York State Scholar Athlete Recognition. So wrestling, bowling, cheer, indoor track, girls and boys varsity basketball, which means that over seventy-five percent of the active roster had a grade point of ninety or above. So that's phenomenal there. Four sectional champions in our track, Cole Irwin, Kate Stevens, Arlen Wright, and Halla Rolder. Cole Irwin advanced to New York State, we finished twelfth in New York State for all school sizes. We had four sectional champions in wrestling, Lincoln Snyder, Matthew Seer, and Gabe DeMille English. Liam finished third in New York State and Gabe finished second in New York State. Good job to them. Cheerleading was a Section Two Class D champion. They competed in their first ever New York State Cheer Championship. Emma Dedelson received the New York State Sports School Award for Class D Cheerleading. And girls varsity basketball, they were the Blue Division Championships or Champions and the WAC Cup Champions. They finished eighteen and five in the regular season. Can I wrap this whole? Okay. Good old. Our boys varsity basketball team, they were the BKW Holiday Tournament Champions, the WAC Blue Division Champions, and WAC Cup Champions. They were also the Section Two Class C Champions, New York State Northern Region Champions, and New York State Champions. They finished the season undefeated with a twenty-six and O record. Shane Kirk was a New York State Class C MVP, New York State Tournament Class MVP. George Wright and Dan Coats were Class C New York State Tournament All-Stars, and Arlen Wright was a New York State Class C Sportsmanship winner. I want to thank all the coaches, advisors, teachers for their dedication to programs and congratulate them on their success. I also want to especially congratulate our students on their accomplishments. I'm incredibly proud. I want to thank the BKW families, the board, and the community for their ongoing support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff.
I'm gonna give it my best shot here. My computer wants to connect or stay on the internet, so we're having issues, but I'm gonna make it work.
Better.
Oh, I will, don't worry. So just for those who missed our first two budget workshops, I wanted to do a little budget recap. For those of you who have been monitoring the outlook of other school districts, it probably will not look too much different than what you're seeing in other districts. So just some key dates with our budget development calendar. One of them has changed. We are adopting our budget at our April twenty-first board meeting. That's on Monday night. We're starting at six PM on that night or seven?
No, we have to start at seven.
We will start at seven, I will adjust that, I apologize, I don't know why.
Seven thirty would be better, but seven works.
I think seven's good for everyone. The budget hearing is May sixth, the budget vote is May twentieth. The governor's proposed budget, in a nutshell, essentially is full funding of foundation aid for schools. That was a problem last year, as everyone recalls. The governor talked about making significant changes to foundation aid funding. She is fully funding that this year and has proposed, it's important to underscore proposed, a two percent minimum increase to aid for school districts. She's also proposing formula updates to student poverty factors. What that means for us at BKW is a total of eleven million, seven eighty-nine, nine hundred and seventy-two in state aid. This is a really important slide, and yes, I did send it to elected officials. So essentially, this is what all school districts are up against. We have, the numbers in red are significant, very significant to us. We have tremendous increases in operational costs. Insurance is probably the biggest one for us, just looking at the prescription premiums are a little up over ten percent. Health insurance premiums are still being negotiated. Contracts are being negotiated, we are coming to the end of that. So I should have, would be one contract which we are currently negotiating. So I should have those numbers solidified in the next week or so, which is positive. And it's really helpful when we're able to extend or renegotiate contracts two, three, four years because it helps us to trend out expenses. New York State Retirement System, we're looking at a nine point five nine percent increase in TRS and a sixteen point five oh increase in ERS. When we're talking about auto and property insurance, originally we had planned for a five to ten eight percent increase. We recently found out that increase will be significantly more than ten percent. And we also recently found out that our deductible, like most school districts, is going up significantly from like twenty-five hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. So that was, yes. So that is a significant increase.
Are they marketing it?
Yes, we are. FICA is going up seven point six five percent. Utilities, I'm sure all of you have felt that in your homes as well, utilities are going up ten percent. Fuel is a ten percent increase, that's pretty conservative, that's probably minimal on there. Waste management, five percent. Our Bosie Services charges are going up five percent, and Bosie's TQ services are likely going up just about ten percent. So when you compare that to a two percent increase in overall aid after being held flat for two years, it really turns out to be a deficit for us. So when we look at additional reductions that we have, we know that building aid is proportionate to building debt. So we haven't had a really recent capital project since twenty nineteen, which means that we lost building aid to the tune of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. When we look at transportation debt, you'll recall last year we did not have a bus purchase. And so we lost aid in transportation because the debt wasn't there. Again, there's that proportional relationship. So with that, we lost about a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars for a total aid for BKW down to four hundred and twenty-one thousand and change. With that, we're also weighing in potential additions back into our budget. The school resource officer, we're still waiting on the contract from Albany County Sheriff. We are anticipating that being around eighty-five thousand dollars. We do have a couple grants that we were fortunate to receive so we can offset that salary, but not completely cover it. We're also looking at a dump truck purchase. The last dump truck that we had or have is in twenty eighteen. It's getting kind of tired because it is our only dump truck and it is used consistently for just about every purpose we have here with the maintenance department. It's a total cost of a little over seventy thousand dollars, which equate to almost sixteen thousand dollars for five years. That dump truck also comes with a plow and it comes with a salter. Our salter is broken. Albany County has been gracious enough to help us out in emergency situations if we can't get our salter working. They've been helping us out a little bit, just kind of swing it in. Administrative assistant, we lost one last year, so we are down an administrative assistant in the high school in its potential of thirty-five thousand dollars plus benefits. That was removed in our contingency budget and we could potentially or have looked at the notion of potentially restoring composition. And field trips, as Mr. Tid mentioned, there were quite a few trips that were cut as opposed or because of the contingency budget last year. So adding in an additional ten thousand dollars to cover field trips, originally that figure was twenty-two thousand dollars, so we kind of right-sized it a little bit. It's a little bit fuzzy, just a general idea of budget allocations. Program accounts for almost eighty percent of our budget. Capital, a little, little under fifteen percent, and administrative is about six percent of our budget. When we look at total revenue, when we look at local sources, we're looking at about four hundred and eight thousand dollars that were able to contribute to the budget. We look at state aid, sorry for that extra one in there. We're looking at one eleven million, five ninety-one, my dollar sign got misplaced, eight eighty-six. The tax levy at three point three percent, which is our cap, is eleven million, four thirty-seven, four forty-two for a total overall budget of two million, four thirty-seven, three twenty-eight.
Twenty-three.
What?
Twenty-three million.
Sorry, twenty-three million, did I say twenty-two?
You said two million.
That would be.
Nineteen seventy-five.
Been a long day.
Nineteen seventy-five is calling.
That's right. That would be great. When you look at the expenditure totals categorically, so we're talking about general support, that accounts for about one million, twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. Operations, a million, four, get the idea, I don't need to read the numbers off for you. Instruction, eleven and a half million essentially. Transportation, about one and a half million. Employee benefits is over seven million dollars, seven and a half million dollars. Debt service is just about two and a half million dollars for an overall operational budget of twenty-five million, two seventy-four, three seventy-nine, oh seven. Teacher and he says, who notices something different from last year already? Nobody. We have consolidated or condensed this budget through a lot of work already by half a million dollars. You guys, it was twenty-five million, seven eight nine last year on contingency budget. So we have already cut a half a million dollars out of this budget, just looking for creative ways to save. However, even with what we are planning to utilize in reserves and state aid, we are still at a projected overall budget shortfall of a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. So that leaves us to, what do we do about it? So we are, like many other school districts, looking at creative ways to close the gap. We are looking at reductions due to attrition, and a lot of that we've already kind of figured out and utilized for that half a million dollar closing of the gap. We're looking at reductions due to restructuring programs within the building. And then the last case resort for us will be reduction of positions. We do not want something to be impactful to programming. At some point, there becomes very limited options, but we are going to utilize and look into every other option first. With that being said, any questions? As you recall, at our last budget meeting, we were one point one million dollars in gap. So we are making gains, slow gains, a little bit every week. There's, there's some positive chatter in the capital of maybe some state aid increases. But we're in the business of not believing it until we see it, unfortunately. So we can't count on that money until we see it.
Well, if the, if the Assembly, the Assembly's what?
Assembly's two point nine percent.
Two point nine, and the Senate is three. What's an extra percent above that? Above, what would that equate to?
For us, a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Every little bit.
So I know that this has kind of been put on hold a little bit because of Stacy and what she, what she had going on last week.
Right.
Do we, do we want to have another, like, budget workshop for just an hour before the twenty-first? To get, because if we have to adopt it at the next meeting.
Right.
It would be good if we had, you know, the last, really, three prepared.
We have one scheduled for April tenth.
What?
April tenth.
We do have one in there? Oh, okay.
April tenth at six PM.
Okay. Good. Can we make that seven?
I think, sure.
Making it seven, is it?
Seven is seven.
What day is that?
It's the third of August.
Okay.
Again, this is a similar place that many school districts are in right now, just due to interest in cost decreases in aid.
Personally speaking, I would feel better if we, if we had that meeting on the tenth, two weeks before we have to adopt it and we're as close to what we think is final as final.
Yeah.
Just so we can ask questions, go through a little bit, like, forget all this stuff, this is all great, but we've heard it six times.
Yeah.
It would be better just to go through, you know.
Specifics.
The very specific details of, and then allow us to talk about communication. We should have some solid numbers at that point, too. Right? Well, technically, on the tenth, the state should, you know, if they're, theoretically, they're supposed to adopt their budget by April first, right? So.
But there's no, I believe they don't.
No, they, right. They may, they may not, but.
I think the tricky thing is, is that we already cut, you know, other districts haven't had to do that, because we already cut a lot. So I think it's important for that communication piece that we, I mean, based upon Mr. Tid's presentation, we survived and flourished this year. But how long can we hold, hold that ground? So I, I think that communication piece is going to be huge. Because it's amazing, the accomplishments this year. With, I mean, that's above and beyond with a contingency budget, but it's, it's hard.
But here's the thing, right? And I've thought about this over the last couple weeks. Everything that's being done today has, I won't say nothing to do with this year's budget.
It's real.
It's all work that's already been done.
Yeah.
The impact of this year's budget is in subsequent years, right? And so if you have another year where you, where you don't keep the same programmatic things going and all the things that you do.
We already made the cuts.
Right, so I mean, and I don't, that's what I'm talking about, I don't want the community to lose sight of that, like.
No, that's what I mean, it's gonna snowball because we can't.
Because people can look at that and be like, oh, they're fine, they're fine, look at all they did. Well, that's all free work, right? We're not through this year's entire budget.
Right.
We don't know the impact. I mean, fortunately, it's staff is great and we've held up a lot of things that we've always been doing.
And the fundraising has been huge, too. PTA is going to run out, too. It's just, all of our sources are, and I think that's, that's what I meant by like communication.
Yeah, no, I hundred percent.
It's not going to be able to keep up.
Right.
You know, Kim, to that point, too, it would, maybe it would be helpful if someone could gather the dollars that have come in from the fundraising. the dollars that have come in from the fundraising, from the GoFundMes for the boys' basketball, for the indoor track, for softball.
The PTA for all the fun, the field trips.
Yes, because, you know, that shows the money that didn't come out of the budget that should have, that the community, you know, the community is still supporting it, but in a different way.
They're paying for it.
Right.
And that would be really hard to do, because a lot of that money would, like, for softball, that was still in your last year's budget. We still act like, you know, the school can't pay for hotels.
No, no, I know.
So certainly, you know, there's a lot of boys' basketball.
Maybe more instead of a dollar amount, like a list of everything, just to show something, because.
Yeah, but.
I agree with.
So, so I'll play that was advocate on that, right? The people who would vote a budget down are not people with kids in the school, they're like, well, those people, the people who decided, they're deciding what to donate to and they're donating based on what they want to provide for their kids.
Right.
Right? And a lot of the mentality out there for a lot of people is that that's the way it should be. Right? So it may feed that.
Yeah, I got you.
I, I think you gotta be very strategic with this, we are doing these things, we want to maintain this level of excellence because it's the right thing to do for kids and we need everybody's support to do it.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Yeah, there, unfortunately, there comes a time.
I was going to say quote that, but done.
I, I put it on there. You know, I, I think there comes a time where, you know, we've been held flat all of these years and, and those numbers that I presented on the slide, slide three, I think it was, they're not new, they're different percentages, but they're just as high. I don't think we've seen a year with health insurance increases less or, or even like auto and property insurance increases of less than ten percent in several years. So if you take that and you add that into the equation of being held flat for two years, it, it's sort of.
Well, and I had that thought too, right? Of late, because then, to me, this is the message that needs to get to, and I was hoping that Assembly, Assemblywoman Fagie would be here, because who cares what the formula used to be and that it was, we're, we're held harmless based on, you know, a thousand students or whatever, whenever that, whenever that went into effect, right? The reality is, is that the biggest disservice that the state did was put the tax cap in, right? The tax cap, I mean, not necessarily here because we never went to it, which we should have over the years, but the, the real disservice is, is, is in the fact that every other expense is going up exponentially.
Right.
Right? Every other of those other lines are going up, so you know, and the Rockefeller study is going to say that, you know what, there should be, there should be thirty schools across New York State. That's what the Rockefeller study, they said that we shouldn't have little schools. And so, and there's, there's, they really, there's really, there, it doesn't really address how to solve the problem. The problem is, is this is the new baseline and they need to keep it with realistic increases in what economically is happening in every district.
Right, I, I would wager just from what I'm seeing in other districts, it's the operational costs in every single district. You know, we've gotten salaries to a really good place, we've gotten, you know, other increases, it's just literally operational costs that are just crippling us unfortunately.
The other question I would have while you're dealing with the auto insurance, I mean, hopefully, hopefully, we don't have to get to it, but have you asked them what the cost of insuring electric bus is going to be?
No. It's got to be a conversation down the road.
Because the cost, well, the cost is triple.
Right.
Right? So if you total one, they're paying out triple.
Right.
So the cost of, I mean, that's something that needs to be thought of as well, because that line is going to go up dramatically when you have to get to a fleet that's all electric.
Right. And that's not, it's not off the table, I know I've heard rumblings of folks saying that electric buses are off the table and.
No, it's off the table this year because they don't have to deal with it this year.
Right, I've gotten absolutely no indication from anyone, but that's something that they're just going to do away with.
Yeah, that, I mean, forget all the other things, that's just another nail in the coffin of them here that, and, and in theory, right, you technically probably have to have more of them than what we normally can, you know, the buses that we have now, you probably have to have more of them. And so your insurance costs are gonna, are gonna be permanent.
Right. Any other questions?
One time.
Can we go back to Mr. Tinn?
But nice word getting in. To, to their credit, the building level administrators have been working through this, but they're probably really sick of me talking about the budget because they've been working through this with me consistently, trying to find creative ways to save money without impacting programming. So to their credit, they've been doing an outstanding job. It's just, it's tough stuff, for sure.
All right.
You want to stay there?
Sure, let me just put my computer down. All right, recognition is actually going to be the other computer because I can read an email. All right, we have a very important person to recognize this evening, which was spurred by an email that I received from Justine, she's the esports club advisor at Bama Hunsent School. I'll just read the email because it's absolutely lovely. She said, "I'm ready to express gratitude for your support and support of scholastic esports. This past Saturday," which was coincidentally a while ago, "your team hosted an in-person tournament at BKW High School and it was a resounding success. It was great to see the students from both of our schools thrive in a competitive environment facilitated by Coach Builder who sits, building skills in teamwork, communication and problem solving, all while having a lot of fun. I appreciate the opportunity for the students to connect with their peers and showcase their hard work. While scholastic esports programs foster the acquisition and growth of many real world skills, our students will benefit from later on. The in-person aspect of these Saturday tournaments really solidifies relationships for them. Preparing the E S S E F league has been a great choice for our school and we're so glad Bill is also involved. He's been a really great asset to the league and an amazing resource and support of local scholastic esports programs." So, Mr. Durkis is, we wanted to recognize you this evening for not only your work with esports, but also your work with all things kid tech. So for those of you who don't know, we gave students the option of watching our game, our basketball game, which inconveniently was held, the semifinals was held on, at one thirty on Friday in Binghamton. Many of our students obviously were busy going to school, so we decided to offer them a watch party in many different locations and Mr. Durkis has pretty sure set up ninety percent of it. And so I think our students were grateful, it was the first time I'd ever seen students protest going home on a Friday afternoon. And, you know, trying to get them on the bus is a little bit difficult, but we are so grateful for you, Bill, and all of the work that you do. And so we just wanted to express our gratitude to you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. An absolutely humble guy. I think he feels a little nervous, so we appreciate you. The other folks that I wanted to recognize were Duncan families and all of the fire departments who came out and woke up the neighborhood to, to welcome our cheerleaders or to send our cheerleaders off to their state competition, that was absolutely amazing. To send our basketball team off to their state competition and to welcome them back, I think they had thirty minutes to get it all together. And I don't know how, how in the world Mr. Scott Duncan managed to do it all, but he managed to get everybody together and everybody out of bed and rolling at midnight in order to welcome the kids back and it was absolutely amazing and I know the kids in the community really loved it, so special thanks to them, we will honor them in a, a little bit more of an organized fashion when we honor the sports, the students, the athletes at our next meeting in April, that's going to be honored. So thank you so much to the Duncan family, to everybody in every fire department, ambulance squad, just community members who came out and froze to welcome our kids back, it was absolutely amazing. The thank you to the amazing BKW community for all traveling out to Binghamton. We had so, so many people in the stands and that's a tremendous drive for folks to make on a Saturday night and be there at seven forty-five. It was amazing to see so many people there, so thank you to our entire community for their support and how the kids love it, we love it.
Okay, can I have one more?
Please do.
Recognition?
Yes.
I know we haven't discussed it, but there was an email today.
Yes.
Can we talk about the email today?
I would love to talk about an email today.
And if we need to take board action later in the agenda to formalize that.
Yes.
Should, but Casey Miller and Rebecca Nick and Abby in their business, I figured out that.
That we two. You two are at the end of them, yeah, I know.
But they, they offered to build two batting cages that were, well, one was priced, I believe it was one, and the email said it was priced at eighteen thousand dollars.
That's for two.
That was for two, so it was eighteen thousand dollars. They're going to donate and build it, the only thing the school would have to buy at that point are the nets for it. That's a huge gift of their time, their resources, and I thought it was an amazing gesture and they should be thanked as well. During the recognition for that, because that's huge, so thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you to yours. Yes.
Yeah.
It was told just a few days ago that that's his job, so.
Which you probably love.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Then I would be remiss if I didn't say to Mr. Durkis, because he is probably, he is one of the most humble people and every year, budget time as different things come up, he's, especially when things are hard, I always get a text from him like, "thank you for what you do," et cetera, et cetera, and there's probably nothing greater than to be able to recognize you, because you are, really, if I, if, if you could be cloned, you know, you embody what it really is to be a professional. You're, you're, I mean, you and I go way back, the work you did, coaching track and all these things. Kids like you, parents like you, you go above and beyond, you don't care about, you just figure it out. And, you know, esports, you're a baby, the conservation club, you're a baby. Just phenomenal, you are an amazing human being and this district couldn't be luckier to have you, so from the bottom of my heart, I'm sure the board as well, thank you.
Thanks, I get a lot of pleasure working with best kids up here, right? I joked today with a bunch of them at school that we're up here on top of the hill and everyone gets to look at us all the time, they're always looking at us, figuratively, you know, early. And just this last couple of years got to showcase a little bit to the bigger state, what we really are, but the kids that make this building, right? You guys have, have you left, so thank you, it's never fun, I had a dad who was on school board, I remember, he believed that too, come back, I love you guys, have the handle and all sorts of things, so thank you very much for that. And I just, these kids are awesome here. Your kids are awesome, you're all there.
All right, all right, well, enough left, we got business to do. Did, did anybody want to speak, is anybody here to speak?
Nobody's.
We're good, okay. Do you have any other superintendent updates or did that cover it?
I think that about covered it.
Yeah. So we'll move on to consent agenda. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves, accepts or authorizes the following: the minutes of the two twenty-four, twenty-five and three six twenty-five meetings, the C S E, C P S E recommendations, the February treasuries reports and the warrants.
Make that motion.
A second.
Perfect, thank you both, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Personnel, approved personnel schedule A. Upon recommendation of the superintendent schools, the Board of Education approves personnel schedule A as per the attached. Any discussion on that, there's some, for the record, there's four retirements, James Lemire, social studies teacher, Donna McGovern, living environment teacher, Darling Thurber, elementary teacher and Jill DeBarro, family consumer science teacher, all effective six thirty twenty-five.
I want to say personally, this one's really hard for me. Mr. Lemire, I was the first class he ever taught here at BKW and I made him promise me he would stay through.
So he's only going to teach you like ten years?
I made him promise me he wouldn't leave until he had taught both of my kids what he did and Donna McGovern, phenomenal science teacher, Mrs. Thurber, she got through through fourth grade kicking and screaming, both of them. And Ms. DeBarro is also an excellent teacher, we are going to, they're, they're hard to replace and in my heart, Mr. Lemire is irreplaceable. I asked Katie if I could vote now and she said, "you've tortured him enough."
That's next, thank you.
So well said, I have some good names and I know, I haven't gotten to know all of them as my children's teachers, but Mrs. Thurber has been pretty remarkable. She got Kayden through COVID on screen and it was his best successful year ever academically, so I think these teachers deserve a wonderful retirement, but it's hard to see them go, so thank you for their time.
Yeah, retirements are always bittersweet, right? They, they deserve it, they've worked a long time, given a lot to the district and should, should enjoy the fruits of their work in retirement, but yeah. Wish them the best in whatever the future brings them.
Hopefully relaxation.
Yeah. Maybe some fun.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, I just need to vote on that. Call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that motion. Massive unanimously as well. So if you're assessing your discussion on repair reserve?
Yes.
Business, old business. Shoot.
So we are proposing, for those of you who recall, we brought some money in from the repair reserve last year. We wanted to, our parking lots are in pretty desperate need of sealing. Obviously, we wanted to wait until the salt gets off the parking lot later this spring in order to do that. So we will be doing that, doing some sealing, some sweeping and then some sealing of the parking lots later this spring just to try and keep those in good working order, so we can prolong their life a little bit. So that is about twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, will we be repainting right after that as well?
I believe painting is, is involved. I will double check on that, but I believe the spaces will be repainted.
It's actually not as bad as I thought it was going to be. I thought it'd be a lot more to, to seal the amount of parking spaces.
It did as well, yeah. Just trying to keep, keep the light of the parking lot up a little bit.
Cool. Anything else, you good?
No, that's it.
Okay, next up is approve the amended twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. Upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the BKW amended twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar as per the attached.
I'll make that.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion, I think this was just an update from the change from last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Just the conference day, so I don't know if it was, the conference day is booked.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Approve tax refund, upon recommendation superintendent schools, the Board of Education approves the tax refund as per the attached.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Any discussion on that, pretty good drive? Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Approve the senior trip, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the amended senior trip as per the attached.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Discussion on that? What was the amendment?
Changing, I think.
Yeah. It was five hundred dollars to fly.
It was $500 to fly to Orla Beach, so they're flying Orla into Olsend. So, they just changed location. Same weekend and everything.
Makes sense. Cool. Sounds like a blast.
It's a senior trip. Hardworking.
Went to the Great Escape.
Six Flags.
It was the greatest game.
Oh, no, I went to the Six Flags Agawam.
Well, that's the one.
Yeah.
That's the good one.
Yeah.
Our advisors dropped the ball, we didn't get to go.
Oh my god.
So, we skipped, we did senior skip late, three days, and went to America.
Oh, very.
Probably, yeah, seventeen, eighteen-year-old. Good thing I didn't come to the board.
We'd like to approve the trip to go to America. Sounds like a bad idea. It was.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We have an MOU, as we do typically for this particular individual. Upon recommendation superintendent schools, the Board of Education approves the amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding for Jeff Harvey as per the attached.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
And then for edification, what's the change?
That is the addition of 15 days to the original 16 that we approved from working for the year. We've had some technology issues that have just come up. He's just used his days and probably done some.
Okay.
Just giving him four days.
Perfect, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Approve second reading of a particular board policy. Upon recommendation superintendent schools, the Board of Education approves the second reading of policy 1210, Board Members' Nomination and Election, and 3311, Notification of Disclosure of Employee Disciplinary Records as per the attached.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion on those? Everybody's good with them? Perfect, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're gonna, I need a motion to approve the April 28th Board of Education meeting to be amended to April 21.
I'll make it.
I'll second. Anybody want to discuss that?
Always going to be right after break.
Huh?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's due to the state, the budget adoption.
Yeah, I'm just teasing.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good chance I might not be there, or if I would be, like, maybe gave a cold one school that day.
Okay. Don't the budget adoption not a big deal? Do my best. No, no, I'm kidding.
It's, it's about to stay a little more if you look at the next day.
Why?
At your counter.
Oh, no, we gotta do the bus proposition.
Oh, sorry.
That's what I'm saying. What are you talking about? You didn't do that last year. $130,000.
You're right.
Prime recommendation of superintendent schools, the Board of Education approves the bus proposition as per the attached.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All right, anybody want to discuss why we should buy buses? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. That carries unanimously. And then we will approve the year-end schedule. Upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the 24-25 end-of-year schedule as per the attached.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
You want to tell us what we're?
Yes, so what you'll likely notice if you look at this is that we have two snow days, snow days, recess days to use. That is, of course, if the weather cooperates and we don't get a late-lay snowstorm. So, we are proposing using those days to extend April break by just one day, the day after Easter, and that is April 21st. Maybe you can move the date. And then the second one would be for Friday, June 27th, which is the last, last day of school.
You didn't want to go longer on it, did you?
I did. But I, I did. Yeah.
Is there a committee that voted on this?
No.
I think Ann made. I think Ann did.
I did want the day, and Ann can attest to this, I did want that, what is it, Tuesday? Happy Memorial Day. I said, I would like that day off for very selfish personal reasons.
So, let's do it.
I would love to, but I also like to check with other departments and see where other folks have taken their vacation and what kind of hardships they might face. So, there's, there's a couple of folks that it would make it difficult with transportation.
I just have a question with Easter. Like, I don't know, like, I don't work, I work in a school. So, like, if you have, if you work for the state, let's say, like, when parents just naturally have Monday off, do they get Monday off, like Trevor said?
There's no, there's no, there's no official holiday.
For Easter, okay. And the only reason I ask is just like the hardship for parents if they already have that week off, but there's plenty of notice. I was just curious. I mean, I'm not getting Monday off, so it's not really fair. Just kidding.
So, vote no. Vote your conscience, Kevin.
If you vote no, we're going to back to the table, and I'm going to vote no on that.
All right, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have a question, though, as far as.
It's over, it's over.
Not about that, not about that. Just selfish. I guess I could ask this later, but like, it says senior words, night, and then it says times for everything else. Eighth grade moving up ceremony, is that in the evening? Is that during the day, or is time?
That's my fault. I added them on in the last minute.
No, it's not your fault, it's fine.
6:00 p.m.
Oh, so it's in the?
Typically, like, sixth grade and the other elementary one are in the day.
Yeah, like pre-K.
Right, yeah, pre-K.
Those are usually.
Oh, that's right, the eighth grade one.
It's always that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Should, you want to for, let's, I need a motion to formalize the donation of.
I'll make it.
One second, okay. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Any committees meet?
Sick Bank Committee met Monday, March 3rd at 10:00 a.m. Myself, Mike Swinging, Lori Hill, and Dem Sholz, since came there, just a brief meeting to discuss who voted for this.
Okay, cool. Thanks for doing that. Member comments?
We, Drew and I went to the calling hours for Mr. Matthews, and it was heartwarming to see the students that were there that night and past students. Like, I think Drew saw almost half of his class that night. And in speaking to Kara? I wasn't sure if it was Kara or Carr. She mentioned to me how incredibly comforted she was by the support she got from the BKW community. And that was wonderful to see that many people there. And I'm very glad we were able to give the district the following day to attend the services. Secondly, as we talked about, Saturday night was amazing. The older Jocelyn stayed home, the younger Jocelyn was on a fire truck. But it was wonderful what the community came out and did for the boys' basketball team. And then also the musical.
Plus, great.
And we need to find some more fundraising opportunities for the music department. I agree.
Anybody else? Just, there's so many great things that go on, right? Sometimes we overlap things that maybe we could do a little bit better job of trying to make sure that things are spread out a little bit better. In particular, like, you know, like, when the play is, the start, the start of the spring season is, I'm going to tell you that boys' basketball will probably be in the state final league next year, right? So, maybe we could look out next year and plan accordingly, so those things aren't all happening at the same. Not just, but like, you know, stuff for the community, they want to go out and watch basketball in the rushing, right?
Yes.
Also, the people on the play and the basketball players don't get to do that.
Yeah, yes. But honestly, I have to say, there were some varsity players in the audience.
Yes, undead.
Yes.
Kids were lining up for autographs. I know, I totally agree with you.
We would have gone out to Binghamton Saturday to watch.
I mean, I know it's a good night.
We would have gone take Katie out to dinner and, and watch the game, but.
It was one of those, you know, it's a good problem to have because of all the things that are happening, but maybe it's just something they could just do a little bit better.
And then I won't have to cry for like an entire weekend. I swear I've been crushing. Play, so I know you guys are shocked, but.
I was going to say, how's that any different than a Tuesday?
I had a pom-pom Saturday. I was thrilled. Thank you Shannon Fouts for bringing a bag of pom-poms and made my whole night.
And she was so excited.
No, I think that's a good point, Amy.
Especially because we did, we did have folks trying to do 10 things at once, be in the play and support. Go to the basketball team to be with.
And then, and even the spring, start of the spring, it's like, a lot of those kids, you know, the basketball kids who are missing baseball right now, we take that, right? And a lot, a lot of play kids are missing out on the start of their softball season, right? It's just, it becomes lots of prime jungle at once, so. See how we can handle it.
And my only note from Mr. Tid's presentation was there was quite a few recognitions up there, especially with music and art, that I wasn't aware of, which is great. I mean, you can't mention every single one, but it would be cool to see those, some of those names come out on like our, our Facebook page. And just, there was some really big recognition. So, I mean, I know that there's so much going on, and we're recognizing as much as we can, but just to try to just keep pushing out as much as we can with those departments.
That'd be cool, and I know Bosie's did it once, and we don't need Bosie to do it because everybody has a cell phone with some sort of, like, the new iPhone. According to the commercials, has like a cinematic, like, there was a whole movie made on an iPhone. But what if, if we not putting something on Mr. Durkisitz's plate?
It's already in the works for the fall for some of the course of the teaching, creating digital edits and videos.
Right, and say, have like a club for kids.
Already in the works.
Where we could, they could interview.
Oh, cool.
And put videos out and post them on Instagram and post them, you know.
The catch I have to deal with on my end, it's called that law too deep, you know, with the identification of kids in the district. So, we have to do the little legal workarounds to make sure that we're not exposing kids to public.
Right.
In a sensitive way with our data, so it's already in the works, kind of, if they have a skate, you mean, it's your last turn. They used to be the fifth row, it's kind of film class.
Mr. Spack?
Mr. Spack.
Mr. Spack.
You resurrected him from, and now it's.
I think a lot of them are, I think I have something. He has something similar with the film and whatnot there that we're going to kind of bring a modern twist to it.
He had a whole film in L.A.
Yes, I won't be doing the film and that thing, but creating digital media in that capacity is something we're trying to integrate into what we're doing in the middle school of, of high school technology. So, yeah, it's coming, getting the kids to have real-life experiences and work that will benefit our community.
That's awesome, yes. Internship opportunities also.
Already. Yeah, that's awesome.
Nice job.
Yep, there I am. I knew you'd be on. I knew you'd be on that. Anybody else with comments? Unfinished business? I think the only thing that's outstanding for me is getting a facilities committee meeting. Of course. I am. We got to talk about the next project, like, that's going to, that's going to be a priority. And I'd really like to go back to the, we had a couple of meetings where there was staff on it that were kind of walking, kind of walking around the facility. Like, for me, I walk around when I come and I look and like, that's right outside the main office that was supposed to be fixed, but never was fixed. Do you have, you noticed that in the entryway, outside the entrance to the main office or to the secondary office?
That like fascia board.
The fascia.
Or was the finger whatever?
Yeah, it still looks like crap. But all the things that look like crap that we, that might get missed by the architect, but to empower the staff to look for these things so they get incorporated in the project. Because, you know, it, it creates ownership, pride.
Stuff there picking up as they see every day.
Yeah, pride of, pride of where you work. You know, it's like walking around your house and
Right.
Doing the little, the details. So, be, that'd be the premise for wanting to get that thing, that committee, committee meeting set. But that's all I got. So, with that, we're six minutes past 8:00 a.m. adjourned meeting, so we did pretty good. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Thank you all. Have a great night. Have a good stop.